All right. See what I mean? We gotta take, gotta take charge here. Oh, y'all care. I'm coming.
All right, all ready? All right, it's 7:01 PM, November 28, 2023. We'll call the regular city council meeting to order. First, can we all please rise for an invocation given by Dan Zander?
Most gracious God, we ask you to be with us as a city council members in the city of East Point. We pray for all of, all of here, and we just wanted to just keep this city council meeting go smooth, and let this thing goes smooth forever that we can do. And we just have to do what we, what we have. We just, we love you, God, and we love you all, all these people we have here today. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Curly?
Here.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Here.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Here.
Councilmember Post Shadlik?
Here.
All right, moving on to item two, approval of the agenda, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Post Shadlik?
Yes.
All right, and we'll move on to item three, first hearing of the public. The first hearing of the public is open, would anyone wish to be heard?
Hi, Cindy Federley, East Point resident. Hope everybody had a nice Thanksgiving, and to Christmas now. I want to bring attention to the activity at the newly named Our Place on Grashit, south of Tofer. Used to be the Ray's Boom Boom Room. They had an event there on Saturday evening. There were cars parked down Grashit, down Veronica, which is the street I live on. I'm the sixth house, there were cars parked at least eight to 10 houses deep, down Veronica. I'm not real comfortable with people walking to their cars after they've been partying for who knows how long. I don't feel it's safe for my neighborhood. They left tons of garbage. My husband drove up Grashit on Sunday morning and was shocked at how many glasses, papers, cups, just garbage littered all down Grashit from Our Place down to the resale shop on my corner. I feel like the south end of East Point has been forgotten. We have two used car lots that make us look like a junkyard, because they have so many cars waiting to be fixed. They're blocking the sidewalks, they're blocking our view to pull onto the street. It's a mess, and I really hope that this council will take this seriously and do something about it. I also wonder if Ray's Boom Boom Room had new owners, and that prompted the change of name? And if that's the case, who's checking like the occupancy numbers? Is that something that the police should be doing routinely? Because if they have cars parking that far away from the business, it seems there'd be more people inside that building than should be allowed. Anyway, I'd appreciate somebody looking into that, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, read a statement.
Go ahead.
From the Fair Housing Center of Metropolitan Detroit. Email was sent to the East Point City Council. Dear City Council Members, we respectfully request that the following statement be read during the public comment on, oh, December 5th. Should I read it now?
We can wait till December 5th, that's fine with me. All right.
My apologies.
No, you're fine. With that, the hearing of the public is closed. And on to approval of the minutes, item A, can I get a motion?
Yes.
Who moved?
Well, I was just gonna read it that I would move to receive and file the minutes of the regular meeting of November 13, 2023.
I'd second.
All right, any comments? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Post Shadlik?
Yes.
And Mayor, I would move that we receive and file the amendments for the organizational meeting, November 13, 2023.
Is there support? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Post Shadlik?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
All right, we have no scheduled hearings, so moving on to item six, unfinished business, item A, Building Department Transition Updates. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is just a general update from our last meeting that we are in the process of working through bringing the Building Department back in-house. We did complete the interviews and competitive testing for all those qualified for the building official in the rental and code enforcement officer position. We are kind of in a waiting position until civil service on Monday, but we're prepared to certify those lists with the Civil Service Board. And then, as of Tuesday, we'd be eligible to put our offers out to those three employees that we'd be hiring and onboarding. So we're kind of in a lull, waiting until we can put the offer out, hear back from the candidates, work through the background screening, the physical and drug testing process, and then when their process, or when their availability is, to start directly after that. So our interest in, in this item is basically to update our process, but then also gaining council's approval to continue with McKenna as is through the month of December. And then we can bring forth another update on the second meeting in December. Our hope is that we also have information from Roswell at that point as it relates to the sharing the full-time employee for council to consider that for the trades inspectors. But we do not have that now. I know council is also in receipt of proposals from McKenna, so if there are any questions on that, I can answer those, or I can touch base on those afterwards.
Okay, and so you're not going, you're not asking for a decision on anything until maybe the next meeting or when we have more information?
Correct, yes.
Does anyone from council have questions? Okay. We'll move on to reports from administration, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We still have water filters available and cartridges, and MDHHS recommends that you replace your cartridge every two months. So if you've not done so, please stop in at the library, City Hall, or DPW to get a replacement cartridge. We have our tree lighting ceremony this Thursday, November 30th, at 6:30. We have a lot of community partners between the Lions Club, JJ Mish has been an incredible help in setting up all of our beautiful decorations, Urban Seed, Cops Cares, Fusion Marketing, so many incredible partners coming out to help us bring this together. So please join us again this Thursday, November 30th, at 6:30 here at City Hall. I believe, I was also told there's a saxophonist, we're working, we're trying to bring the choir out, so it'll be an incredible event, and we thank you to all of the sponsors, as well as Juanita Wall Tower, our Community Engagement Manager, has really been coordinating for the first year, has done a great job in coordinating to get this done. And Rare, Rare has also helped, which is also important to mention. And at the end, or the next meeting, I'll be sure to mention everyone that was involved, so we didn't leave anyone out. We also have a board and commission mixer coming up, December 14th, at 6:00 PM. So all of those that participated in board commission, whether you're still on the board, have resigned based on, you know, other, other things that were going on, please join us at 6:00 PM, December 14, here again in City Hall. An update on the Nine Mile Construction, the two south lanes are poured finally, and they're going to continue that work this week. They're working on the center lane, the right turn lane, going on to Grashit, and then the gaps that are in between down Nine Mile. And then they'll be working on the sidewalk. So hopefully in the next week and a half, we'll be done with all the concrete on Nine Mile, and then the vegetation restoration will occur in the spring. We also have a February presidential primary coming up. So we just finished an election, we'll be prepping and started our meetings now to prepare for the election coming up February 27th. This is also the first election that we'll have early voting, and early voting will start February 17th. We'll have more information as we continue to like finalize all of our plans for early voting, but it is new, and there's a lot of informational things that we'll have to go out to the community, to the council, and that we'll present here as things are finalized. And then we're also working to try and identify incredible election inspectors. So if you're interested in being an inspector for whether it's the early voting or the, the actual day of voting, please reach out to the clerk's office. You can fill out an application now, even though it's not official election season, but come out and help us out in finishing those elections out. We also received notification last week from Macomb County for all of their efforts as it relates to Highland Park and the bad debt expense with GLWA. We received notification that they've approved a refund to the suburban communities. So Macomb County as a whole is set to receive $4.7 million in credits. That's not specific to East Point, that's all of Macomb County. But that resolves, I know there's a lot of questions, as the bad debt expense was assigned to suburban communities, and how that impacted us here specifically in East Point. And so I can let Randy touch base on that as it relates to East Point's financials for the water rates. And then, I know I can touch on the trash dumpster replacement as well. We had some outreach as it relates to priority rate, priority waste, replacing trash cans. This contract actually requires priority to replace the cans if priority damages them. So if their equipment or their staff damaged the cans, then there is a requirement for them to replace them. So if your can is damaged by priority and you're having an issue getting that can replaced, please reach out to our DPW, and we can try to assist with priority getting that can replaced. This contract does not permit replacements based on damage to the can that the resident has caused or because of negligence. So we have seen cans that were sitting too close to, too close to a grill and burnt on the side. But that is an issue from the resident, and priority will not replace that based on the contract. That is up to the resident to replace. So if you have questions related to your can, or there are any issues, or you're having issues with priority, please feel free to reach out to DPW, and we'll try to work as the in-between between priority and the resident to ensure that things are done properly. They also do assist with some wear and tear maintenance. So they can assist if wheels are broken, or if there's like latches that aren't latching appropriately on the top, and they can help with wear and tear. So reach out ahead of time, and we could also assist with, with priority helping with that as well. If there are any questions, Mayor, Council, I can certainly answer those.
How much would the garbage cans cost the resident?
I want to say $100 is the last quote that I've seen. That's an expensive.
$100?
Yes.
All right, does anyone else have questions for the city manager? All right, we'll move on to item B, Finance Director's Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Touch on the refund first, since you threw that at me. Back when they were talking about the, the bad debt and charging it to the individual communities, the majority of it was tied to sewer and not water. East Point's portion of the water was like less than $9,000, it was very minimal. The sanitary district, though, was going to be getting a refund, or a charge in that point in time of about $350,000, of which we would have gotten a portion. I would expect similar numbers for the refund, that we'll see a probably less than $9,000 refund on the water, and the rest will flow through the sanitary district, and whether they decide to send it back our way, that's their business. So it may or may not be significant, is I guess what I'm getting at. The audit, I expect to have the draft audit report out this week or early next week. It will be there plenty of time for people to review it before the actual meeting with the auditors, second meeting in December. And then the final item is for the two members, two new members of council. There's some paperwork that needs to be done, I assume you want to get paid. So I did send emails out, if you haven't seen them, I have hard copy, and either way, we need to connect after the meeting. That's all I have.
Okay, regarding the sanitary district, I'll give council an update once we have a discussion on what the district's gonna do with that. Any questions for the Finance Director? All right, moving on to City Attorney's Report.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Next week's council meeting, I'm requesting that a closed session be scheduled. I've already spoke to city administration about that to discuss pending litigation, and also a written attorney-client privileged communication as well. And that's actually all I have for this evening. Council will be in receipt of my monthly status report, I'll be sending that out at the end of this week, and it'll contain a list of all of the current matters that our offices handle. So with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business, item A, approval of the, approval of First Amendment to site agreement of Sprint Spectrum Reality Company. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Okay.
Did anyone have questions on it?
No, I'll make the motion. I would move to approve the agreement between Sprint Spectrum Realty Company, LLC, and the city of East Point to extend the antenna lease to the city-owned tower located at 17,809 Mile Road, and authorize a city manager to execute all necessary documents.
I'll second that.
All right, did anyone have any questions for administration?
No, but I think it's 10 Mile Road, it was 10 Mile Road, he said nine.
Oh.
I did?
Sorry.
Did I?
I'm listening, yeah.
Oh, excuse me.
I didn't know if you had to change.
Just for an update, there's, there's money involved, one way or the other. Can you tell us what, what that is?
Yes, so the city essentially receives $1,665.61 per month for a total of $19,867.32, and then it increases 3% each year. And I believe council made a previous requirement that the cell tower lease revenue is designated to the parks.
Okay. All right, do we have any questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Post Shadlik?
Yes, Shadlik.
Moving on to item B, Equiture phone line recording agreement. Would anyone like to make a motion on this?
I might, the motion that we approve the five-year agreement with Equiture for the police department, phone line recording, and to approve the additional cost of $1,774.10 to be paid out of this year's budget for equip, equipment purchase and installation.
Second that.
All right, any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Post Shadlik?
Yes.
Moving on to item C, proposed revisions to the sidewalk drive, driveway approach replacement program. And I guess before we start this, Ms. Walton, did you want to give kind of an update on what the change was regarding?
Thank you, Mayor. So we're amending the, or asking council to consider the amendment of the ordinance. The sidewalk program is currently under the Department of Public Works, though the ordinance states that it is through Building Department and a combination of the city manager's office as well. But in actuality, the Department of Public Works has been managing it. We do assist with the clerks' union in doing like the mass mailing, which we continue to do as a requirement with the clerks' union. So there is amendment throughout the, the language in changing that and designating it to the appropriate department. And then we also amended language as it requires to the letter of notification to residents in the area or district that we're doing the sidewalk replacement. Our proposal is to amend that notice due to the timeframe of the work that's actually being completed. Right now, in the ordinance, it requires by November 1st that we bring it forward and have notice sent out to the residents. Our proposal is to actually send that notice in March, as it's much closer to the time that we actually evaluate the sidewalks, and the work typically is not done until the end of the concrete season, which is normally in the fall. And so right now, we're giving notice on November 1st of one year, and then we're coming back in September, October of the following year to actually do the work. And we thought it was more appropriate to notify someone in the beginning of the season, when we're actually out evaluating, they can ask questions, they have time to find a contractor, if that's their option of what they'd like to do, versus following up a year later essentially to complete the work. So those were our proposals in amending the ordinance. And then we also attached a language as it relates to the sidewalk replacement criteria. And there were two amendments essentially related to how AW and our engineers, as they were the ones last year that actually identified. The prior year, we had two employees that were identifying, as we didn't have our construction services coordinator yet. And the requirement for all of the surrounding communities is one inch or more in the difference in the concrete. And then there was an additional revision at the end, which clarifies the responsibility of the sidewalk replacement and warranting for the additional 12 years that is there if they elect to do the sidewalk with a license contractor. With that, I can answer any questions?
And I know Mr. Plucci is here as well. Did you, can I, did you have anything to add to that explanation? Okay, did council have any questions?
No.
I had one, so, and I had actually asked Darren about this before the meeting, the notice requirement. Which notice, I guess, he, he might be able to answer the question, or he already did for me earlier, I believe. Which notice is sent out in November, by November 1, under the current ordinance?
We normally send the notice to the next section of the city that we're gonna review their sidewalk. So we're saying, we're coming to, to your area to review the sidewalk, and then giving them the options of what they can do for the replacement if we identify a portion of their sidewalk that needs to be replaced. So like if the north end of the city, then we would be sending that out November 1, even though we're not actually gonna review the sidewalk until summertime, and then the replacement isn't gonna happen until fall.
For the, I've got a quick question about that. Going from November to March, isn't November, November be more helpful for residents to talk to someone who would pour concrete by March? Don't people start to have their, you know, summer filled up to pour concrete? I mean, this is probably a very old ordinance, I don't know how, but I don't know if maybe that's what the reasoning was for, to do it earlier?
Sure. So one of the issues from our perspective when we had the conversation was also we're sending the notification that we're gonna be out in your area, but it's not the notification that you actually have a gap in your sidewalk and that it needs to be replaced. So we're not actually evaluating until the summer, so you'll get the notice that will be in the area. be in the area, but it's not a notice that you actually need it to be replaced. That notice doesn't come until the summer, once the evaluation has been complete, and then at that point is when you would need to find a contractor, or ask questions, follow up with DPW, and have that work completed by the fall time.
When's then the notice come then by Mar- by Mar- no, wait, no, the first one's by March? What would, I guess, what's a typical timeline for like the whole process then?
So last year, they were going out in June, and they were evaluating, AEW was out early summer evaluating, and then sending notices out for the sidewalks that they were identifying, they were marking with the pavement in the beginning of the summer. We don't have a specific deadline of when the actual notice goes out for evaluating.
You mean, actual notice, when you say evaluating, do you mean the notice for, you've been identified as we need to replace?
Correct, correct, yep.
So I, I kind of, the way I read this ordinance as written, there might be, need to be other changes, because I read, shall give final notice of the construction, repair, reconstruction as, so we're just sending out in November, notice that we're coming to take a look. I would read this as, we're supposed to already tell them, hey, you've been identified. I mean, that's just how it reads to me. I don't know if anyone else disagrees. So, I mean, if we move the deadline to March 31st, does that mean we're going to be sending by March 31st, the identified locations?
No, the identified locations typically are not done until summer. So the normal operation of the sidewalk program is that our construction services coordinator, but last year AEW went out in the beginning of the summer and began marking the sidewalks, and then they sent notice to the residents. This letter that was going out was notification that their neighborhood was next to be evaluated for the sidewalk replacement program.
Okay, so I guess, I'm less concerned with notifying a fourth of the city, or whatever, that they're, they're up for reevaluation, I think our ordinance should be written in a way that says, we give someone notice by this date, so they have time to, if they want to replace it themselves. I just think that, that makes sense, otherwise, you know, I don't know why we even have the notice requirement in there.
Okay, so we would amend it to a certain date that council would be comfortable with. Darren, do you have a suggestion as it relates to AEW, or our construction services coordinator going out to identify for your department?
Yeah, I'd like to evaluate it in the spring, get it to them as early as we can, and then do the work at the end of the season, be in fall, that give, give the homeowner as much time possible to find a contractor, if that's what they choose to do. So I can definitely come up with some dates for that.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting any dates, I just think ordinance-wise, it makes sense, and with how it reads now, I think that was probably the intent when it was written.
See, the, the November notice was very confusing, people were getting these notices, and they didn't, they didn't understand it, so, because it was basically the ordinance, so they were reading straight from the ordinance, so they were thinking, well, why are you doing sidewalk in the middle of winter, this makes no sense? And then our office was getting a lot of calls on that, so that's why we decided we would like to change it until early spring, to give that notice that your area is next for the sidewalk assessment program.
I was going to ask, would council be okay if we said by the end of June, the evaluation would need to be done, and letters would need to be out, if the construction was going to happen in the fall?
I, I mean, I, it sounds sort of like that's what we're doing anyway, so I think that would be fine. And today, you're just asking for us to give direction for the ordinance to be drafted, right, or prepared? I know, it's kind of-
Yet to Rich.
Yeah.
Essentially, yep, with, with the amendments, for that, for it to still come back.
All right, does anyone else have questions? Or would anyone else like to make a motion?
Mayor, if I could, so is the council tonight looking for our office to put something in ordinance form, for further consideration at a future meeting?
Yes, I think that's all we're-
Okay, and what specifically, I know Ms. Walton has, as, city administration has prepared what's attached to the agenda with proposed revisions, is there anything, how would the council like the ordinance form language to read, as far as dates and deadlines?
I would, personally, I would just suggest preparing ordinance form, and maybe getting with Darren to determine what kind of date, because we could discuss that if we want to change it at the next meeting, once we have it in front of us.
Okay, do we want this on for next Tuesday's agenda, or the second meeting in December?
I mean, next meeting's fine with me.
I may need a little more time than that, to get with AEW, and-
Okay.
You have to remember, I'm working with the engineering firm, construction coordinator, and essentially a sidewalk contractor, so it'd be a little bit to get all those dates together.
Second meet, yeah, second meeting in December?
All right, thank you.
I don't think we actually need a motion with that, I think, Rich, you understand what you're doing?
I do, Mayor.
Okay. Anything else on that item? All right, moving on to item D, approval of the parks maintenance service work. Ms. Walton, could you kind of explain where this is at right now?
Absolutely, thank you. So, our parks maintenance contract expired on November 15th, we've been very fortunate to have J.J. Mish working with us, and knowing so many incredible things about the community, so we did identify this last month, and had to approve emergency services to prepare for the tree lighting ceremony, as that is a part of this contract, but we brought forth and received a quote from J.J. Mish to continue their services, as provided through the month of December, so that we're not operating out of contract, and it is approved by council. We do plan to go out to bid, just to clarify a lot of the language that is in the contract, it's also not specific to parks, they do a lot of work within the city of East Point, with general maintenance with the city, whether it's Grashit, Kelly Road, they do things with our flag posts, things for city hall, special events, so we really depend on them, and the work, and the things that they know within the community, and so we want to clarify that contract in the bid that we put out, but then we also want council's approval to move forward with continuing service in December, because a lot of the work they do is a necessity and needs to continue.
I have a few questions, Mr. Mayor. The RFPs, it says will be posted, what would be the date that your RFPs would have to be returned to city hall?
So, we post at least 15 days, we've not finalized all of the amendments to the RFP, and so we haven't posted it, but usually, we post it for a minimum of 15 days, so once that's posted, it'll be out for two weeks.
Do you have any idea when you might post it? Any estimate?
Our hope is as soon as possible.
Okay, well, I, I'm a little concerned that the contract work would be at, till the end of December, is that correct?
Yes, with the quote that is attached tonight, yes.
And hypothetically, you're not ready to pick an RFP by December 31st, what happens on January 1st if you still don't, you haven't completed the RFPs, would you not stay with J.J.?
So, we'd likely have to come back at the second meeting in December with another quote from J.J. Mish, but we wouldn't be operating outside of the contract, council is the only entity that can approve work in this excess and continued work, so I wouldn't be able to authorize those, I'd have to bring that service forward for council to approve that quote to continue after December.
If I may, so, I guess for tonight's purposes, because I looked at this, and I thought, well, we're going to have to come back again and keep approving it, because there's no way to do an RFP and handle this by the end of December. It would make more sense to me to authorize the city to continue operating under the previous contract, I don't remember what the termination provision was, but, you know, we could do like we did on the McKenna contract, and say with, you know, 30 days' notice that either party can terminate, or something like that. That makes more sense to me, to me than coming back over again and again. Also, I guess I would like to know what council thinks in terms of, do we want this to go out to, as an RFP, or do we want just to redo the contract, because it is, it is kind of a hodgepodge of different services, like meshed together, I think, just because it's evolved over the years, what J.J.'s done with the city, so what does this council think about that?
Sure, sure, I'll jump in. Generally, I just think we should just go out to bid each time, you know, regardless, we can put the same exact specs out again, and that's fine, and just gather bids, could just be one bid, who knows, and obviously, we'd hopefully go with that bid then, but, you know, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I would agree with that, actually.
Okay, can I-
I'm sorry, go ahead. So you're, let me misunderstand this. The removal of holiday decorations, lighting, maintaining flag posts, I don't have a clue what that is, so if you want to take the time to explain that, how do you maintain, how do you maintain a flagpole? Unless you're talking about putting the right flag up there?
Well, that's what it is, replacing flags, raising them, lowering, when the governor asks us to, ropes, that type of work.
And they're doing that now, or is that additional? They're doing that now, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the contact, contract ended November 15th? And this is, and we have no contract?
Correct.
So we're, we're operating as we should be, as what the old contract specified?
So, no, we're not operating under the contract, we actually received a quote from J.J. Mish, and I authorized emergency services based on planning and finishing out, the planning for the tree lighting ceremony, and so that notification was sent out, but we didn't approve services to continue, we came to council to approve the request to continue services, so we received an additional quote from J.J. Mish to continue services through December, for the same services that they're providing.
So the date of December 31st came from J.J., not from you?
We just said the, for the month of December, yep.
Well, as I said, I, I've been around the block a lot of times with these RFPs, request for proposals is what RFP means, in case two or three of you don't know what that is. I'm of the opinion that you're not going to, you're not going to be ready for the end of December, and I, if we're going to, we may end up, if you don't have a pretty well completed by the, what would be, I'm not sure what the date for our December, second December meeting would be. Anyway, we're going to have to renew that, but month by month, or whatever, if, if you feel like, here comes a second meeting in December, and we're not ready, the RFPs haven't been completed and identified and interviewed, then I think we got to be prepared to, to extend that, extend the contract.
So moved.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Motion that we continue working with J.J. Mish for parks contract work until we finish the bid process.
I'd second that.
Okay, motion support, and just to be clear, is that just operating under the previous contract, is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
Well, that, that's good, that would satisfy my concern that we're not going to be ready by December 31st, so let's just keep, let's keep J.J. on, and do what we're doing according to the contract that we've got with him. We can't change the contract if, you know, we got to keep what we're, what he's doing, you got to keep the same prices that we're paying J.J., right? Yes, okay.
I would like to have the, like, 30-day provision or something to terminate, it's the same thing we did with McKenna, I don't know if you'd be willing to amend your motion, or?
Yes, please add that in, 30-day notice before we end it and start with a new contractor, or, yeah.
So.
Okay.
Still.
All right.
I just-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You know, I got to ask her, folks, there's only six of you out there, I got, I got to, gosh darn it, am I supposed to say mayor, or Mr. Mayor, or what's appropriate?
You can say Mike, I don't care, it doesn't matter.
I just want to make sure, so let me understand that, I'm just, I'm just concerned that the company has been doing one hell of a job for us, continues until, and they may, we may pick him from the RFPs, we don't know, but no way do we, I want to terminate anybody, because we're late, it's not us, we're late, contract's over, and we probably should have been doing this 90 days ago.
Well, can I clarify, Mr. Curly?
Yeah.
Just, the 30 days was only applicable if we were going with someone new, if we approved them for the next RFP also, then the 30 days is basically meaningless.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Mayor, here goes the 45 minutes. Okay.
Mr. DeFelice, would you like to say?
May I just speak about one thing? I want you all to remember, though, when we started this contract, as in the past practices that we've done the other contracts, it's a five-year contract, the first three years, and then we have to come back to council to get it approved for the remainder of the contract, so I want everybody to know that we do have remaining space on this contract to be renewed, and that hasn't been discussed here at all. So you could renew it for another two years, and I understand you, as a manager, don't like the way the contract's written, and I think we've all agreed over the years that the contract was never properly wrote, but I just want you to know that we have an option in that contract, if everybody agreed on it, to just finish the contract out for the other two years.
And that's all I wanted to say, and Mary has something she had to ask about, what you're talking about as far as, what you want done.
Now, with the way you're saying, you want to, like, give it to us month to month, are we going to do all of the duties we were doing prior to this Christmas month? Are we going to continue with DDA? Are we going to pick up trash every day? Are we going to do absolutely everything we've been doing every day?
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is, we're extending operations under the existing contract, so it would just go back to the status quo, there wouldn't be a, administration doesn't have to go through a month-to-month emergency services process, it would just go back to normal.
So we can start picking up garbage tomorrow and everything else, and, like we did, until it was stop warp?
Everything stays the same.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Assuming the motion passes.
If I may, just as an information, the Detroit, the Downtown Development Authority voted in May, I believe, that they were going to go with an in-house, they were going to do a part-time person to do their work, that this contract had been approved by city council without DDA having any input into it, so I don't know how you guys want to handle that.
Can administration just work that out with, with J.J.? I know there was an issue with the DDA.
The issue that happened with the DDA was, we had a problem with the employee doing it, and we straightened up that issue right away, and we haven't gotten any complaints since then.
Do you have anything to add to that?
No, we can clarify, I mean, we've brought it to DDA, and I know there was, like, DDA initially wasn't paying for the service, now they are paying for the service, so that's one of the things that we wanted to clean up in putting a new bid out, is clarifying that, and if, you know, DDA is to go out to bid, J.J. Mish is absolutely welcome and encouraged to apply and submit an RFP if they were to go out to bid, but at this point, the DDA has elected not to go out to bid, they want to attempt an actual employee to fulfill those services, but again, if that seasonal work does not work out, they will have to go out to bid as a DDA, and then would have to bid those services out and award a contractor, but again, we've had no issues in working with DDA here at the city.
So, are we to continue them doing the DDA until you direct us in a different direction?
That's my understanding, yes.
Any other questions?
Well, maybe, maybe I'll just have questions later I'll have to think about, but I don't, I'm confused by this part-time employee with the DDA, the- The DDA's never had any direct, well, I shouldn't say never, in the last 10 years, a direct employee, like, hired by them. I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand the part-time employee thing.
If you could speak to that.
So the DDA has built in a part-time employee into their budget. It currently is there now to, they title it as a DDA ambassador, is what they wanted added. And so the person essentially would be going and building connections in the DDA, picking up trash, and essentially providing that service specific to the DDA. The board has decided that that is the type of service they would want to continue with or to actually implement versus having contract services to provide them. I think a big thing for a lot of the members on the board that they've expressed is having and building the connection within a downtown development where the person builds connections, builds relationships, and then brings information back to provide them with, you know, any feedback specific to the DDA. So that is their vision. It's something that has taken some time in building out a job description, finding a person that is available and interested in this specific type of work, and for the rate that the DDA can actually afford. So there's a lot of factors that go into it to actually bring it to fruition. So essentially, they are utilizing JJ Mish for services because the council awarded, with the parks maintenance contract, it was included in that bid in the RFP that was put out. So DDA didn't have a chance to review, you know, the RFP, any of the services that were put out, the level of service that they wanted done. And so essentially, that in the last, I would say since springtime, has been a topic of conversation for the DDA.
And I guess just to be clear, you're saying this is not just an employee we already have hired and works part of their time for DDA, this is a, just fully separate?
Correct. It would be a separate employee. And I think, Kim, do you know the amount of hours that they had structured in their budget for this employee? I don't remember offhand.
My understanding is that it was planned for $20 an hour for about 15 hours, maybe 20 at the most, but the cost savings was key for the DDA.
And there was an individual that did that roll through 2018 until they were physically unable to do it, which is when it went over to JJ Mish.
They haven't hired any or even started that process. So for the purposes of tonight's discussion, I would say just go forward, you know, and if an issue arises, we can deal with it.
And DDA do everything we're doing.
Yep. We have motion support?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfelt?
Yes.
Councilmember Proshadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item E, approval of special meeting for council goal-setting session.
Mayor, I would move that we schedule a goal-setting session for January 23rd, 6:00 PM, January 23rd, 2024, at 6:00 PM.
Second that.
All right. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Sorry. Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Proshadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfelt?
Yes.
Moving on to item F, approval of the Mount Clement Santa Parade posting on social media. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we post what is in the agenda packet here. I don't think I need to read the full thing that's here on our social media as required by our last motion about social media posts in the city council.
I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfelt?
Yes.
Councilmember Proshadlik?
Yes.
Great, moving on to payroll and bills, would anyone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I would move that we pay the bills in the amount of $1,780,943.85.
Support.
Great, any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfelt?
Yes.
Councilmember Proshadlik?
Yes.
All right, moving on to the second hearing of the public, which is now open, would anyone wish to be heard?
Good evening, administration, council, and mayor. In regards to the lady that got up and complained about that one business on a corner of Nine Mile, and I can't remember what the other street is, if that would have come before me when I was on a planning commission, they wouldn't have got my approval. There is insufficient parking, period. Now, I don't know if they, if the planning commission gave them parking from another business, but that should stop. If you want to open a business, you should have ample parking. So for me, to keep this from happening to the people who live over there, shut them down. Now, in regards to the sidewalk, if you find someone who needs their sidewalk replaced, give them a letter telling what the criteria is and why you felt they needed to have their sidewalk replaced. It's very simple. It happened to me, they came and marked a bunch of my sidewalks, and there wasn't anything wrong. And I think gentleman right there was mayor, and he came out and looked in my neighborhood about what I was talking about. And things changed. The guy who was doing it was just marking anything. So for the people who live here, let them know why they're having to have their sidewalk replaced, and then let them know about the criteria that you used and how you came up with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to be heard?
Hi, Cindy Federley again. As far as the sidewalk replacement, I feel as a homeowner, getting a notice at the end of June that my sidewalk needs replacing is kind of late if I'm going to try to find a contractor. They've already got their plans for their work in place. So I don't know why it couldn't be end of April or even May, if that's possible, I don't know. Just thought I'd throw that out there. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to be heard? All right, seeing none, the second hearing of the public is closed. We'll move on to mayor and council reports. Mr. Baker?
Thank you, I got nothing tonight. Very efficiently run. Everybody have a good night.
What about your word? Your word?
All right, quadricentennial. It's a 400-year timeframe. So that's my word of the day, dusting off the chops.
That's good.
All right, Mr. Curly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things, I don't know how many of you watched the funeral today for Rosalind Carter, but it was beautiful. And one of the songs that the choir sang happened to be one of the songs that I have selected when I have my funeral. And it's a message to all of us, let there be peace on earth, and let us start with me. Everything starts with me, doesn't it? So I would ask that all of us think about that, think about the beautiful words that were spoken. Now I have a message that I'm excited about from Habitat for Humanity. I may take a few more minutes, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. Back in 2005, Habitat came to Detroit and built, I think it was 35 houses. One, they wanted to have a house that was built by denomination, a church, that was a request from the President Carter. And so American Baptist that I was affiliated with, said, let's do it. So we did it, so we got there. We paid, I think, $100 a piece to participate, but we got all kinds of stuff, a helmet, shirt, but President Carter came. And we're standing nearby the construction site, and we said, well, you know, the big old limo ought to be coming any moment now. And all of a sudden, out in the distance coming toward us was a golf cart. And here this guy sits with overalls on and a cap and a red handkerchief tied around his neck. And we said, that's the President, oh my goodness, that's the President. He came, we all practically stood at attention, he shook everybody's hand, we had a slight prayer, and then he said, all right, let's go to work. Well, the second day he was there, I was selected to paint this one room, and he's at the doorway doing the frame, pounding the frame in. And we start talking, not one single word about politics, nothing. I talked to him about growing peanuts, how he started growing peanuts, and how does the market go on peanuts now? Then I asked him how he got to do Sunday School, be the Sunday School teacher every Sunday when he was in town. So it was a great visit, it was a great visit. I love the fact that we didn't talk politics because how can you, how can you argue politics with the President when you're just a peon like I was back then? But anyway, let me put my glasses on, Habitat is doing something which I think is wonderful. In the corner of the world, Habitat affiliates are being asked to have public in their respective service territories leave a message of love and hope in memory of former First Lady Rosalind Carter. Doors will be signed, will be on display on, from Wednesday at City Hall here through Friday. Now, what do the doors mean? Essentially, the size of the place that you're going to write a message on is the size of, it's probably an actual door. And they're going to take those throughout the state and put them in the resale shop that they have. So if we're going to come here for the Christmas party, you got a chance to sign them. So folks who are watching, and the overcrowded auditorium that we have tonight, if you all can come, that would be swell. And I'm just thrilled to death. I love Habitat, we have a wonderful relationship, we meaning the city, with Habitat. We've negotiated with them to, for them to take over several houses. And if you've never worked for Habitat, volunteer. They're going to be, they'll come back to Detroit one time. I've already been told that I've reached a capacity of my age that I can't, I can't work Habitat because you're always climbing a ladder. And they said Harvey, at 86, you can't climb a ladder anymore. So I can't do it. And I'm sad about that. But anyway, the door is going to be fantastic, guys, so come on over. I expect the mayor and the city council to be the first to sign. And then we go with the city manager, and the assistant city manager, and the police chief, and the DPW worker, and the finance director, all can sign that sign. So you can tell that I'm happy. Did I forget anything? Kim is, Kim is fantastic. She, she is also personally involved with Habitat. And every time they get a house ready, she called, this is Harvey, put your 2005 shirt on and your cap on, and come on over to wherever the address is, because they're done, they've renovated it. So be proud that we've got Habitat that we can count on to do that, and be proud of the fact that President Carter worked even through all those stitches he had in his eye, remember that? You've seen all, seen the pictures, didn't you? He went to work the next day. He went to work because he loved Habitat so much. So that's it. Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Ms. Proshadlik?
I just had one quick one that I'd like to mention, just a shout out to Tim and Nick for their free store that they're operating. Their free store is going to be open on December 9th and 10th, that weekend, where they're giving away toys and clothing and things like that to those in need. It's a worthwhile project that they've really been working very hard on. The building is right next door to the villa, so as many of you are familiar, it's right on Grashit between 8 and Topher. But they've been working on it, and they've got a lot of donations that they've already received. But if you have gently-used toys, or clothing, or things like that, and you want to donate, I know they'll be there this weekend. So I'm sure they would appreciate those donations being dropped off, and they're also doing gift cards and things like that. So it's a worthwhile project for the community, and I'd like to just give them a shout out for all their hard work. It's, you know, definitely a labor of love, and very nice thing that they're doing for our community.
Mr. DeMonico?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying not to interrupt a conversation down there, because I did want to ask if there was a particular quadricentennial that was going on this year?
No.
No?
Harvey needed a word, so I had to pull one out.
Ah, Mr. Curly's looking at me very strange.
I've gone home, go to bed.
Condolences to First Lady Rosalind Carter's family and friends. And I just started actually reading Jimmy Carter's book, A Full Life, and Mr. Curly was talking about peanut farming, and I have learned all of the information I've known about peanut farming in the last few pages of that book, which is not very much. But it did also mention in there, of course, they've got the Carter Center, and it said after the presidency worked there, 51 weeks a year at the Carter Center, and the 52nd week was for Habitat, Mr. Curly. So, good book, if anyone's looking for a good book to read. Let's see, just hope the crowded auditorium here had a Happy Thanksgiving, and I know we've got a couple more meetings, but Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, all that to everybody, and hope to see at the tree lighting on Thursday at 6:30 PM here at City Hall. That's all.
All right, I was just going to mention the tree lighting, so you just had to see everyone on Thursday. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I would move for adjournment at 7:59.
I'll second.
Motion support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfelt?
Yes.
Councilmember Proshadlik?
Yes.
Motion adjourned at 7:59.